The Steamship Authority is a proud partner in many Falmouth community events, including town meeting coverage, and for good reason. Not only do we have a terminal and offices here, about one-third of our employees call Falmouth their home. We always work hard to serve our neighbors, friends, and the traveling public. We recently put seven new electric buses into service at our Falmouth parking lots. Soon we'll be adding new vessels to our fleet, continuing work on our energy-efficient wood sole terminal buildings, and adding solar panels at our largest parking lot. At the Steamship Authority, we're serving the islands and you.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Good evening, and welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, March 24, 2025, at exactly 6:01 PM. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to ongoing litigation where discussion in an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, I'd like this vote by roll call, please.
Zelensky, aye.
Goldstone, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye. And the board will return to open session at 6:30. Good evening, and welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, March 24, 2025. It is exactly 6:30, and the board has just returned from executive session. At this time, I would ask you to please silence your cellphones and double-check that they are indeed silenced. And please notify me as the chair if you are making a video or audio recording of this open-session meeting. The placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of this meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your honor, indivisible, limited to justice, fair and all.
Thank you. Any recognitions from the board? Ms. Goldstone?
I'd like to recognize the founders of the Falmouth Education Foundation, one of whom is in the room for her, as part of her role of ongoing service to the town, but all five founders were honored at the annual FEF Gala this past weekend. It was a wonderful event, and really great to celebrate all of the great things that that group has done for our public schools and our students.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I would like to recognize the passing of Tom Caher. He was a great guy, and he was the RTA Administrator, former representative to delegation, you know, from, he was from Bourne, but I always thought he was a Falmouth guy because he always did so much for Falmouth. I was able to attend his funeral this week, and learned a lot more about him than I knew at the time. Apparently, his dad was quite a legislator as well. So he's going to be certainly missed. He really did a great job with the RTA. I had some experience working with the previous RTA director, and I saw the improvements that Tom made. And, you know, he was, he's really going to be missed, so wish his family the best.
Thank you for that, Mr. Brown. Any other recognitions from the board? Announcements? Announcements from the board for the public? No announcements? Okay, we'll move into public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on our agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Is there anyone here for public comment?
No.
No? Okay, we will move right into our committee interviews. We will interview and consider a vote to appoint members to the East Falmouth Library Building Advisory Committee. And let's start with Jane Stimson. Are you here? Welcome, Jane. Come right up, right up here.
Thank you.
Center of the room. Good evening. Jane, is there anything that is not in your application that you would like the board to know about you?
I think everything was there in the application, so if you'll indulge me, I'll just restate, I think, the few, the couple main important points. The first is that I am an East Falmouth resident. I was born and raised there, and was lucky enough to move back just four years ago. And some of my earliest memories are walking up Davisville, cutting through the woods behind the elementary school, and going to the library, so it holds a very special place in my heart. I've also spent the last 15 years working in library services, primarily as a community college librarian. And through that experience, I have experienced working with architects during large-scale renovations of libraries that I've worked at. I've also had extensive experience on committees and holding committee positions. And finally, the last thing I'll share about that is that my current position is with a state library system, and through that work, that takes me all over the state. And so I've been very lucky to see amazing libraries, and so we have a lot of exemplars to look for.
Great.
So many things. Can I answer any other questions about my qualifications?
Questions from the board comments. Ms. Goldstone?
One question based on, as you noted, your experience of libraries across the state. What's one or a few innovations or key things that you'd really like to see incorporated into this library?
Oh, my gosh, I'm so glad. I'll try not to spend too much time talking about this, but the two libraries that come to mind when I think about really amazing community spaces, the Eastham Public Library recently was renovated, and it is totally zero-carbon neutral. It's got LEED standards. It's absolutely integrated into the surrounding landscape. I don't know if anyone's been there, but it's got these gorgeous windows looking out over the surrounding landscape. You really feel like you're in nature. The North Dartmouth Library Branch is also very similar to that. So I'd say really important in there is that it is based, all of it was based on extensive community feedback. I've heard from both trustees and architects of those projects, and how they gathered that community feedback. They're also incredibly integrated into the environment, which I think is something that we all very much care about here in Falmouth, and we've got some beautiful surroundings. And of course, the environmental impact and the fact that Eastham is carbon-neutral, I think will be really important for sustainability going forward. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. Your resume is extremely well-done, so thank you.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Thank you all.
Dr. Andrew Zimmerman. Welcome. I'll ask you the same question. Is there anything you would like the board to know about you that is not on your resume?
I don't think I expressed clearly enough how much I love this library. Since I retired here, I thought, well, Cape Cod, Falmouth, great, lovely, everything about it. But I didn't know about the library until I got here and discovered it. And I think it rivals any library in my academic background, and its operation, and its quality, and the depth of services that it provides. I happen to live in East Falmouth, and my second discovery was the East Falmouth Branch. And I love that as well. And the people who work in the library, they are very attentive and very resourceful. The other factor I would like to mention is that I don't think that there is as much community involvement, at least in the East Falmouth Library.
May I ask you just to speak into your microphone? You're very soft-spoken. I want to make sure everyone can hear you.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I just wanted to mention that I would like to see, in the new library, more community involvement. However, that is managed through the design of the library and to raise awareness in the community of that it has real potential for community involvement, as does the main library.
Questions from the board? Any questions of Dr. Zimmerman? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yes, Dr. Zimmerman, I'm curious about, I see you related that you had some experience with construction related to hospital improvements. I infer that perhaps you also meant that you kind of were involved with the building of perhaps your own house? I'm wondering what you're referring to.
I'm Zimmerman from Pennsylvania Dutch country. My Swiss ancestors named Zimmerman for the fact that the German word Zimmerman means carpenter.
Okay.
And we were carpenters. I learned carpentry early, and I worked in construction as a teenager in my twenties. And I moved around a lot during my career, and was involved in helping to, not design, but to, on committees that consider different needs in different places, in different hospital buildings, and ADA requirements, which is something I've been very interested in.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Chris Simler here? Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. What would you like the board to know that we don't know about you?
I've been on several committees already, from the Falmouth Bus Station to the Senior Center, to the recently, the Hatchville Fire Station, and really enjoyed the teams that have been put together, and I think Falmouth and everyone has really come together on those projects. We've had successful ones, and I am an OPM, so I know how the OPM world operates in hiring an architect. And I think what I would bring to this opportunity is more the planning, budget expectations, understanding how the public process works, and then working so expectations can be established, proper budgets can be established, durations, and that aspect of a project.
Questions or comments for Mr. Simler? Ms. Goldstone?
Based on your experience on those other building committees, and most recently the Hatchville Fire Station, are there particular learnings that you think you might bring to this committee in terms of making it a successful project?
I got to say, both of the committees have been great. They're really, what I liked on both committees was the interaction, like on the recent fire department one, we had firefighters and we had professionals, which was a great mix. And on the Senior Center, we had community people and senior center experts, and we had builders. And so that was for the building committee, and that mix, and then town involvement, I think it was, it worked out really well.
Thank you.
I have no questions. No questions? I could comment that Mr. Simler's has been a veteran at this type of work, so I think he's well-qualified.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Camille Romano.
At the end of it, I will.
Welcome.
Thank you. I don't think that I have similar experiences as many of these people. I've been in Falmouth since 1991, and as it says in my resume, I'm on the Board of Library Trustees and the Support Fund for the library. I was past treasurer of the Friends Group, so I have a special place in my heart for the library in Falmouth, in East Falmouth. And especially being a trustee, I think that it's important that we are involved in this process. The Massachusetts Library Board of, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners recommends that there be involvement by trustees. And if you look at my application, I put down, I checked off the box for alternate with the hope that there would be a potential to have a sixth person involved in this. And that would be my hope, to be able to be that person and keep involved. And I've learned so much in the two years I've been a trustee, just about the library and the functions and the people there, and it is, as others have said, just a phenomenal place. And I think that the East Falmouth project is special, and will need a lot of input from the people of Falmouth, both in the east and in the other areas of town. And I am a member of East Falmouth, so again, it's something near and dear to my heart.
Great. Questions?
No, I think that covers it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Christian Valley.
So my experience, my family owns a construction company in town, specialized in residential and commercial construction as well. I also served on the Hatchville Fire Station Board. Mr. Simler, I've been on the Falmouth Historical Commission since 2016. I'm on the Edward Marx Committee as well. And I live about a mile from the library, and my office is about a mile the other way, so it's very central to where I am. I look forward to hopefully serving on this committee.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
No questions. I would also comment, I participated in the Edward Marx Building as the liaison, and I found Mr. Valley's contributions very significant, especially with his experience with historical matters.
I do want to say that I think the one potential issue with the library is the proximity to Smitty's ice cream, because...
What's the problem?
Smitty's is, but the library gets kind of neglected, so we may have to change that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last, Judy Fenwick.
Smitty pay you to do that?
Thank you.
I am Judy Fenwick. I'm currently Chair of the Board of Library Trustees, and I'm really excited to be here tonight because we've come so far in what seems like a very short period of time, and the potential for what lies ahead is very heartening. So I think I wrote in my statement that I'm in this for the long haul. I've had various stages along the way with participating. I co-signed the letter of intent with Nancy Taylor and then Director Linda Collins to ask the state if we could submit an application. I co-signed the application with Mike Renshaw and Brian Stokes, the current director, and I co-signed the contract to accept the first stage of the grant coming into town. That's here now, and so we've got to get going. I'm not a librarian by training or nature, but I love libraries. And as folks have said before me, I think we have an example. I believe when the renovation of the main library was finished in 2008, somebody called it the crown in the jewel, the jewel in the crown for the town, and it still is, but East Falmouth is not. And in answer to the need, I think Jane may have brought up about more community involvement. Do I have that right? That there's going to be, we're planning on having a conference room, a sort of a mini Herman meeting room, that would be part of the East Falmouth Library. So when the library's not open, that meeting room, workshops, whatever can take place there that the community can call the punches on that. So that, I think, will be a very exciting part of this adventure.
It was Dr. Zimmerman that made that comment. Community.
Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Brown?
Can you get us a grant to build the whole library, please?
Well, actually, it's going to be state grant, you know? And I don't know what the percent these days, 50/50? Who knows what it'll be when we get to construction? So, but that's something you haven't had on some of the other large projects lately. This one comes with a silver platter of sorts.
Good. That's what we need right now. Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Madam Chair, I had one comment to make, if I could. As the board knows, as you're deliberating, as the board knows, I think it's fantastic we have six candidates for the five positions that the charging document has created. I would recommend if the board would be willing to entertain it, amending, revising that charging document to add this alternate position so that the board would have an opportunity to appoint all six of the candidates tonight.
Are you asking that we amend that tonight?
I'm suggesting that there would be a path to allow all six of these folks to participate in the advisory committee, and we would bring back an amended charging document at a subsequent meeting, April 28. We would have that amended charging document.
I think that's a good suggestion, especially as we have one applicant who's already offered to serve in that alternate role.
And so that would mean you would move the...
Tabling?
Does it mean tabling it now?
Tabling until we have that...
No, no, no. So I've had some conversations with staff, and I think, I'm confident that we could bring back an amended charging document if the board was willing to entertain creating that sixth alternate position.
So tonight, we could technically move the slate with one as an alternate?
That's correct.
So I would entertain a motion.
I would move a motion that we approve the slate as presented and amend it as the town manager has recommended.
And identify Camille Romano as the alternate?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that's in the motion?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Can I just ask one question of the town manager? We do have two candidates here who are members of the Library Board of Trustees. I think it was already alluded to that some degree of involvement is required, and want to just ensure, I've had a couple of folks ask me, is there any problem with having active members of the Board of Trustees also serve on this building committee? And just wanted to clarify that.
That is, that is my understanding, that it is not only encouraged, but I think it'd be a good idea to have representatives from the trustees.
And I thought I heard it was recommended.
I think it's strongly suggested.
So I think having a trustee is recommended.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we do have a motion and a second. We had discussion. Are we prepared to vote?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Okay, we're going to move into our public hearing. Mr. Zelensky for the notice, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183 Alpha of the General Laws as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926 and amendments thereto, that Luke Voss of Rise &amp; Shine Productions LLC Falmouth has applied for a one-day entertainment license for Coast Fest to be held at the Lynn Whitehead Band Shell at Marina Park, 180 Scranton Avenue, Falmouth on Saturday, August 2, 2025, between the hours of 2:00 PM and 10:00 PM. A hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth on Monday, March 24, 2025, at 6:45 PM. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthma.gov per order of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Zelensky. Do we have a representative for the applicant? Come on up. Questions about the application from the board?
No, I didn't see any questions. Did you notice, I don't know if you saw this, but the band, the town band plays on Thursday, and they're hoping that any events we approve for weekends won't be setting up until Friday?
Yeah. We, that was a, yeah. After what happened last year, we were like, that will never happen again. We talked to a lot of production people, and yeah, it was, yeah. They were very gracious about the whole mix-up.
Other questions or comments from the board, from town manager?
No, Madam Chair, the comments the board member Brown just made was a recommendation, a condition, that the working group placed when they met with the applicant, that the that the working group placed when they met, met with the applicant, that the setup be not conflict with the town band.
And then, I have another, just throw this out there, that, of course, now that we voted these new entertainment regulations last year, you know, they do apply to events. It's not possible that you're going to contain the music on-site, but I hope you'll just kind of take that into account that...
Absolutely.
You know, we did have really surprising comments from the maintenance manager at the Harborview Apartments, came to us on another meeting and said that they really appreciate hearing the music, and especially the Coast Fest.
I know.
The people go out on their porches and put their chairs out, and everybody's like cheering a lot.
He's a nice guy. I offered tickets to them, and he said, no, I park in my truck and smoke cigars across the street.
He speaks about a lot.
His ears were burning.
There's his man right there.
His ears were burning.
Yeah. So, I mean, that was really positive feedback. Was just mentioning your comments at the previous meeting, sir, as you walked in.
Oh.
He spoke for you.
Well, did you say anything?
Well, you can, you can say whatever you want.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Comments from the public regarding this application?
I'll go first.
No one else is raising their hand, so come on up. Yeah, you can have a seat.
I don't know, there's really much to add, but, you know, just...
Hold the microphone up a little so we can...
Joe Sudlock, I'm the property manager for the Admiralty Apartments, right across from the clam shell where Coast Fest will be. So, obviously, you guys already kind of mentioned what I was speaking about, but just, I have to say that for festivals, the courtesy and cleanliness that, that Coast Fest has had over the years I've been here, which isn't great, I mean, I've been six years here, but don't have the problem with the trash or anything like that. All of my people that are front-facing love to hear the music, and they range from 18 months to 93 years, and it's just such an important thing for the, for the community. And there's tons of people that come to it, so it's a great income generation as well, so, but full support from the 66 people that, that I represent at the building, and we hope that we can continue doing these great things.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment regarding this application? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board?
Madam Chair, I would like to move approval of the application for a one-day entertainment license for Rise and Shine Productions, LLC, Coast Fest, at the Lynn Whitehead Band Shell at Marina Park, 180 Scranton Ave., on Saturday, August 2nd, 2025, 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM, with an exemption from Section 7C of the town's entertainment regulation, and a condition that no deliveries or setup happen on Thursday, July 31st, 2025, due to the town band using the band shell and field that date.
I'll second Ms. Goldstone's motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
See you there.
Thank you.
Do we have to be here for the alcohol license later?
Could you just come up here? And just so everyone at home can hear your question, just to ask it again.
Do we need to be here till, oh, I'm sorry, Richard Rogers? Do we need to be here till 9:45 for the one-day alcohol license?
It's not consent.
I don't believe so. We have it under consent.
Okay.
Unless any board members had a concern, and we could tell you now, but I...
No concerns, sir. I'm not seeing any. So, it should go through on the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you very much.
You know, just...
You're welcome.
Unless we change our mind later.
Then we'll notify you. Okay, we're going to move into business. Vote to approve and sign the bond anticipation notes, B-A-N-S, for wastewater and the North Falmouth School roof, and we have Laura Citron here, our CFO, to walk us through this. Welcome, Laura.
All right, so, this is to renew outstanding, current outstanding bond anticipation notes for the wastewater management plan, the wastewater collection system, design and engineering, and to issue new short-term notes for the North Falmouth Elementary School roof. It's a total of $8,887,250. As of right now, we're issuing the bans to mature on October 3rd, 2025. The reason for that is because, at least in the case of, I'm sorry?
No, that's me clapping.
At least in the case of the design and engineering for the wastewater system, that can't be issued as long-term notes until and unless the construction bonds are approved. So, we're rolling these over until October to wait and see what happens between town meeting in April and then the ballot decision in May, and then we'll know whether or not we can go long-term with some of these, depending on rates at the time.
Questions from the board?
One question.
Ms. Goldstone?
The, for the, the comprehensive wastewater, the first one, the, the other two are for early-stage funding for those projects, right? That one's at the very end. Can, can you just help me understand why that seems unusual for a use for a ban? I'm just curious why we're going that route.
Wastewater management plan?
Yes.
That's an old debt issue, and this is the only remaining piece of it, is the 172,250. So, it's being spent, and it's anticipated to be fully spent sometime this year, so that's, that's why.
Any other questions or comments?
What are the comments? Good to get this done.
I think, I think we have a motion that needs to be read.
I have a lengthy motion to read here, and I guess it's a motion to approve as, as read here. I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth, Massachusetts, certify that at a, sorry, I didn't mean to, the vote is to vote to approve the sale of $8,887,250, 4.00% general obligation bond anticipation notes, the notes, of the town dated April 4th, 2025, and payable October 3rd, 2025, to Truist Securities, Inc., at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $50,035.22. Further vote that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated March 5th, 2025, and a final official statement dated March 12th, 2025, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further vote that the town treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-212, in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further vote that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further vote that any certificates or documents relating to the notes, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic email in a PDF file or other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document, and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further vote that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
I'll second that big motion.
Okay, thank you for reading that. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Plenty down here. Okay, we're going to move into the Great Pond Phase 1 Sewer Project update with Amy
All right, I gotta wake the computer up first. Thank you. Secret password is here on the...
Will this protect me? Not for that.
I'm sorry, let me apologize for my coughing.
That's okay.
You don't have to apologize for your coughing. I'm Amy Lowell, I'm the wastewater superintendent of the Town of Falmouth, and wanted to take the opportunity to speak with you today about Article 15 on this coming April town meeting warrant. It was spoken, the funding was spoken about earlier this month, so I won't spend quite as much time on that, but there is, there's still a lot of background to, to discuss. So, to review, the Great Pond Phase 1 Sewer Project is the first phase of a project to improve water quality in Great Pond. The targeted watershed management plan for Great Pond was approved by the state in January of 2023. $3.8 million was appropriated for design in November of 2023. The project has since been designed, and it includes two new lift stations, one here at the north end of the parcel called, that was called the Agastar parcel, which was purchased. It is, and the other here in Falmouth Port. There are dual force mains to convey wastewater from the main wastewater treatment facility, and there is also, of course, the collection system, which is shown outlined in, in red. This figure shows the Great Pond Phase 1 Sewer Service Area. That's outlined in bold. The, the western part of this service area is the northeast part of Maravista that was not sewered in the last, in the Little Pond Project, and the other portion of this, of this sewer area is the T-Ticket Path Peninsula, as well as the properties along T-Ticket Highway along, in, north of those areas. The service area is approximately 600 parcels, and there are an estimated 820 sewer equivalent units in that area. We can talk more later about sewer equivalent units, but as you can see in the figure, this area includes Falmouth Port, so that's one parcel with 200 units, approximately 200 condo units in it, and there are a couple of other multifamily or multi-unit parcels here. So, that's, that's how we end up with a much larger number of units than parcels. In addition, there are some commercial parcels along the way. The number of sewer equivalent units is, is not, has not been finalized, and it will be discussed after town meeting by the Select Board. This, so I, I should have mentioned, this presentation is different in a couple of ways from the presentation that was within your packet. I've had a little more time since the packet was prepared to update it. So, one of the ways in which I updated it was that on this slide of the total project cost estimate, I've distributed the, the contingency among the, among the line items here, and resulting in a total project cost of, of exactly 60 million and a proportional splitting of the contingency. The contingency is 16%, because the, the total project cost estimate that was in your packet was 59.4 million dollars, so I've increased the contingency slightly to get us to the appropriation amount of 60 million. It is very appropriate at this point in the project to have a 16% contingency. We have the, the, the first two line items here are two construction contracts. We had the engineer who's designed those contracts prepare a construction cost estimate, and we had an outside, a third-party cost estimator, estimate the project cost for both of those projects, and they actually came up with reassuringly similar numbers, which is terrific, but there is still uncertainty before you go to, you know, until you go to bid and get those numbers, there is uncertainty. Also, grinder pump procurement is involved in this project, and there, we will have to go to bid on grinder pumps as well, so I think at, at this, at this stage of the project, that, that contingency is appropriate. So, I'll just go through the, the items here. There's a collection system contract, which is to put the pipes and the, the pipes in the road and the laterals to the property line in the sewer service area. The lift station and force main contract is to construct the Falmouth Port lift station and the Brick Hill Road lift station, as well as the dual force mains from the Brick Hill Road lift, lift station up to the wastewater treatment plant. Grinder pump procurement, that we, as, we'll discuss grinder pumps a little bit more later in the presentation, but the assumption is that the town will, as it did for the Little Pond Project, buy the, go out to bid and purchase the grinder pumps and the appurtenances that go with them, and provide those to property owners. We have a cost estimate in here for grinder pump installation reimbursement. I'll talk more about that later as well, but that was, there was a precedent for that in the Little Pond Project. Engineering services during construction, once you've designed the project, the engineering work is not complete, you need the engineers available during construction to respond to requests for information and handle proposed change orders, review all the submittals, and they have resident observers out in the field for the project. There's a significant cost for police details because of all the work in the roads. In particular, there's the work along Route 28 and the work in Brick Hill Road that will require police details, significant police details. And then there's an allowance for utilities, fiscal costs, and legal allowances. That's the cost summary. So, town meeting Article 15 has two recommendations, as you, you are all familiar, but maybe your audience is not. The finance committee recommendation is on the appropriation. That's to appropriate $60 million to fund construction of this project and all the costs that I just went through. The Select Board recommendation is on the cost apportionment. 70% of the applicable project cost is to be paid via betterments assessed of abutting property owners, and 30% to be paid by the town. There are a number of steps that will take place after town meeting that are related to the betterment, so any estimates in this, in this meeting tonight are preliminary estimates. There are a number of steps that are going to take place later. The Select Board will vote at a future meeting on the betterment method, i.e., most likely sewer equivalent units, but it is, it can also, you, the uniform method, which is sewer equivalent units, it could also be done based on frontage. We have not done, done it that way in the past for sewer projects. How sewer equivalent units will be assigned to different types of properties, in the past, a, a single-family home is one sewer equivalent unit, and multifamily would be, be, of course, multi, multiples of that. Commercial properties are really where a little bit of interpretation needs to come in, as well as accessory apartments and that kind of thing. And which costs are considered applicable to the betterment? After the bids are open, in fall of 2025, fall later this year, the, the Select Board would vote the order of assessment, which will include the estimated value of the, each SEU based on the applicable total project cost and the total number of SEUs, as well as when that, when that vote is taken, there's a set of betterment plans that would be attached, a list of properties and the assessed, and the estimated assessment per property. The third set, the third meeting is after, after the project is complete, which is expected at the end of 2027, the Select Board would vote to certify the final SEU value, which cannot be higher than the value voted in the order, which is in the, the fall 2025 vote. So, the cost can, the betterment cost can go down based on whatever the final total project cost is, but it cannot be greater than what is voted in the order of assessment. So, the estimated betterment cost, I wanted to, to give a little bit more background on this, a little more information about the potential range and the factors that go into that. Laura Citron did speak about this in a previous meeting, as, as did I. We'd given a, a range that centered on 40,000, but I, we have spent some more time looking at these numbers and the factors that go into them, and I think it's appropriate at this time to, to be a little more specific about, about the range. So, an estimated betterment cost of $40,000 per sewer equivalent unit would, would result, if you assume, number one, that the town does not receive the 25% loan forgiveness from the state, and that the following costs are not applicable to the sewer area, i.e. are excluded from the total cost for betterment. 60, 66%, i.e. 2/3 of the lift station and force main cost and the grinder pump reimbursement. And the reason we're talking about 2/3 of the lift station and force main cost is that the, the, the Brick Hill Lift Station and the dual force mains from there to the plant are being designed and will be constructed to accommodate this first phase of sewer, as well as the next two phases of sewer, so this, this estimate included 1/3 of that cost under this project, and assuming that the rest was not applicable to this project. The estimated betterment cost would be 27,000 per SEU with a different set of assumptions, and that, the assumptions that go into that are that the project does, in fact, receive 25% loan forgiveness, which we do expect. We cannot guarantee, but we do expect the project to receive 25% loan forgiveness from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, and that the following costs are excluded from the total cost for betterment. 92% of the lift station and force main cost, i.e. all of the project cost except the estimated Falmouth Port lift station cost, because the Falmouth Port lift station is serving that sewer service area, whereas the other lift station is serving not only this sewer area, but two future sewer areas. Grinder pump reimbursement is also not included, police details are excluded from this, and utilities, fiscal, and legal costs are excluded. So, this is just to give an example of the kind of, the range of betterment values that would result from some of the factors that the Select Board can consider, will consider in a future meeting on the betterment. Both of these estimates include, excuse me, assume 820 sewer equivalent units, which again is to be determined, but that's our, our working assumption at this point. The final, final betterment cost per SEU will be determined by the Select Board in public meetings, all the Select Board meetings are public meetings, after town meeting. Overall reminders on the project cost. The town does anticipate a 0% interest loan from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust Revolving Fund, also called the State Revolving Fund Loan, covering approximately 92% of the project cost, i.e. all project costs except for the grinder pumps and the pump reimbursements. So, the State Revolving Fund, the State Revolving Fund Loan Program, those, those grinder pumps and the reimbursements would not be eligible because they are payment for work on private property, and, and so we are excluding, we have assumed that they are excluded from the SRF loan cost, but the rest of that, the rest of the project costs, costs we expect, we expect to be, to get a 0% interest loan on. We also anticipate, as I mentioned, 25% forgiveness on that loan, on that, the 0% interest loan for 92% of the project, from the Cape and Island Water Protection Fund. This project will be funded without a tax increase due to those subsidies, debt drop-off, i.e. a decline in the debt owed for previous projects, and use the capital and debt stabilization funds. And this is, there's been extensive discussion with, between myself and the town management and Laura Citron about these, these factors. That's it on the betterment and the cost for now. That's it on the betterment and the cost for now. The next topic was the effluent discharge plan. Discharge flow from the Great Pond Phase One Sewer Area. The dis, the plan is for the town to discharge its flow from the Great Pond Phase One Sewer Area to the existing discharge beds under our existing groundwater discharge permit, starting when the construction is complete and connections begin to be made in the fall of 2027. Beyond that, the plan is to construct an outfall to the sound for all treated wastewater discharge in the future. When the outfall is available, which is projected by the end of 2032, the town will cease land based discharge, i.e. cease regular discharge to open sand beds, one through 15, at the main wastewater treatment plant. When I say regular discharge, we would still likely keep beds available as an emergency backup, but we would cease all regular discharge to those beds. The DEP permitting for groundwater discharge of new or increased discharge has become much more difficult in recent years. We've been very conservative in our discharge planning and we had gone to the DEP and requested a, and a modification to our groundwater discharge permit. We had requested an additional 200,000 gallons per day, an additional flow as a modification to our existing groundwater discharge permit. But that was based on very conservative discharge planning. In particular, we've been preserving a significant buffer for fu, future redevelopment within the existing and proposed sewer service areas for the 20-plus year timeframe. And we've also been using engineering design factors for discharge planning, including a 20% factor for future infiltration and inflow into the pipes as the pipes age. However, the town is not planning to continue discharge, groundwater discharge for the next more than 20 years. We're only planning to continue groundwater discharge until the outfall is available, which again is expected in 2032. So again, that groundwater discharge from Great Pond Phase One area is only expected from 2027 to 2032. I said five years. It's really, I mean, it's five to six years, depending on when in those two years you end up, but there is sufficient capacity under our existing groundwater discharge permit to accommodate the existing and the permitted flows that are, the existing flow to our plant and the flows that have been permitted to date, as well as the planned flows from Great Pond Phase One. Therefore, we rescinded the groundwater discharge permit modification, application and, and the associated hydrogeologic permit that was, permit application that was associated with it. And we are planning that the flow from the Great Pond Phase One Sewer Area will be discharged to the ground, town's existing discharge beds under the existing discharge permit. The new lift stations. On a previous figure, we, I, this, basically we're zooming in here on where these lift stations are located. The Brick Hill Lift Station is going to be on the north end of what has in the past been called the Augusta Parcel, which the Augusta Parcel extends from Brick Hill Road all the way south to T-Ticket Highway. It's about a 20 acre parcel that was purchased for both wastewater and recreational uses. So this lift station that will serve both this project and these future projects is located at the north end of that parcel. The Falmouth Port Lift Station is a smaller lift station that will serve just the Falmouth Port neighborhood, as well as some properties outside of that that can flow to that station by, by gravity. And that is locate, located within Falmouth Port at the north end of Falmouth Port, south of their office and maintenance building and next to Falmouth Port Drive. The sewer lift stations are both designed to have odor control located in the building. So that's sort of a belt and suspenders on the odor control. They will also have submersible pumps, meaning that the pumps are located down in the wastewater in the well, below ground, in the wet well below ground. So submersible pumps are quite quiet. There is a backup generator at each lift station. The backup generators run only when the power is out or when the generator is exercised. So our operators go around and exercise the generators at all of our lift stations to keep them in good shape about once a month for about a half an hour. And that's during the day, during, during the workday. The generator is also within the building, which will help attenuate that noise. Both lift stations will have vegetation screening. Either, we will either keep, in some case, in, in, in some cases we'll keep the existing vegetation and in others we'll have to plant new vegetation. The buildings will have Cape Cod shingles and the, I mentioned previously, the Brick Hill Road Station is sized to handle future phases. This figure, this photograph is of the town's existing lift station on the Alphonse, at the end of Alphonse Road. And it's about the size of the Falmouth Port Lift Station and it just gives an idea of, of the look of the station. We have 11 lift stations in town, some of them in commercial areas, some of them closer to residential. Our existing sewer lift station in the New Silver Beach area is in a flood zone, so it's way up on, way up on, on piers, which this will not be, but it has residences on either side of it and across the street. And I have not gotten complaints about that lift station. Grinder pumps. Wanted to talk a bit more about the grinder pumps. We are assuming that the town will purchase and provide the pumps and all the things that go with it, as we did for the last project, the Little Pond Project. Based on the layout of the project, we estimate the town will provide about 420 grinder pumps. We'd be providing those to single family residential properties, not to multifamily properties, not to commercial properties. At a future town meeting, we, we will, excuse me, at a future select board meeting, this is another future select board meeting, well, the, I'll come and we'll talk about options for grinder pump policy, including the reimbursements and maintenance. If the town wishes, if the select board wishes to provide reimbursements for a portion of the grinder pump installation cost in the, again, for this project, we would need, again, need special legislation. For the Little Pond Project, special legislation was filed to allow the town to reimburse, provide a partial reimbursement to property owners for the additional cost, average cost of, of connecting to the sewer using a grinder pump versus connecting via gravity. So we would need to, that legislation was specific to Little Pond, so we would need to file it again for this project. And there is sufficient time to do that.
Could I ask a question about the grinder pump?
Yeah.
So I've realized that in Mashpee, they're actually using a different process. They're going to have, the town is not only going to buy the grinder pumps, but they're going to install them and maintain ownership.
Yep.
And that allows them to control the installation and also it allows them to then provide electric wiring that goes to up to 40 homes so that in there's a power outage, a person with a generator mounted probably to a truck could come by and plug into a hub and pump out 40, as much as 40 houses. Depending on the neighborhood, maybe it would be less in certain cases. So I'm just throwing that out there because it seems like such a good idea.
Right, so Mashpee is doing things differently from Falmouth in a number of ways. They, they have a small project that's, a small collection system project that is, has been constructed and for that first phase, it's only like 38 pumps. The town did buy those pumps and they are providing them to property owners and it's the same as Falmouth. They have a second phase with more pumps where they are actually putting all of the pumps in the right of way, in the road right of way, which we have not planned to do in this project. That's a very big difference and it would mean all of those grinder pumps would need to be below surface and, and protect it, you know, they'd need H20 loading along the road. And then not all of them are going to, so the same designer is working on that project as is working on this designer. So I've talked with them about it in the past and after I saw your email, I think it was earlier today about that, I called him and asked a little bit more about it. And according to the designer, only 100, there, there is only one area where they're doing what you're talking about as far as merging the, the electrical. And I, what I was told and whatever, the details don't matter, but it's, it's a small portion of the overall area where they're doing it that way. So our project is not designed that way at this point. We are designed, this project is designed to, to do it, to, to, in general, the same process we followed under the Little Pond Project, which is to provide those pumps, which is something many, many towns do not do. Many towns have the property owners do everything that's on their property, but as you know, there's a wide range of how towns handle this. Every, every town's got a different policy on this, but many towns provide nothing and just require people to connect. The town has committed to providing those pumps and all the related equipment and, but having the property owner install them. And then we can talk at a future date more about the policy for maintenance of those and pumping them in emergencies and also about the reimbursements.
I know it's kind of late in the game for new ideas, but I just thought I'd throw that out there in case it's something we might be able to incorporate, so.
And it sounds like you've been aware of different towns doing different things, so it's not news to you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So watershed plans and permitting, almost done here. I know this is a long presentation. We got a couple more slides here. Watershed plans and permitting. So just stepping back, there are a lot of other watersheds in town and over the next five years, the town will prepare watershed plans and apply for permits for all of the watersheds in town to meet the total maximum daily load limits for nitrogen in the coastal ponds. Those plans will vary. Some watersheds can meet their total maximum daily load limits with just innovative alternative septic systems or denitifying septic systems and from fertilizer stormwater management and in some cases aquaculture. Some will need sewer-ing, particularly the watersheds in the South Coast will need sewer-ing in addition to those strategies. The town was just awarded two grants for watershed permitting work. One for work, lay, doing the legwork for Little Pond and Great Pond. Despite all of the planning on those two projects, we are not, we don't have, we haven't, this is a new process, so we don't actually, we haven't filed a watershed permit for those, for those two watersheds. So we have one grant for those and another for McGansett Harbor. Before the town can do more sewer-ing beyond the Great Pond Phase One, we will need another discharge site and we are planning at this point for that discharge site to be an outfall. We can begin planning projects so that they are ready to go when that outfall is available, but right now we, our discharge is limited by our groundwater discharge permit and all the groundwater discharge restrictions. Non-sewer nitrogen removal. Innovative alternative or IA nitrogen removing septic systems will be a part of the town's nitrogen removal strategy for many of the watersheds, as I just said. Ultimately, urine diversion may be one of those IA options. There is some work to do still to, over the next few years to make, to ensure that it can be part of the TMDL compliance plan. Aquaculture and shellfish will help in some watersheds and fertilizer and stormwater management are required in all watersheds. Those options that I've just listed can't replace sewers in the most densely developed portions of the town's watershed, watersheds. We need 100% septic nitrogen removal from the lower portion of the Great Pond watershed, for example, plus more nitrogen removal in the upper portion of the watershed to come in the future in order to meet the TMDLs. The, the schedule for this project is obviously the town meeting appropriation in April, in April of 2025, coming right up. The, this has to be followed by a ballot vote in May of this year. In, in the summer of this year, assuming those first two steps pass with flying colors, we will bid the construction projects. Again, there are two of them. In the fall of this year, we'd begin construction. It's a two-year project for, to complete construction, so by the fall of 2027, we'd plan, we expect to end construction and when construction's over, we would expect the connections to the sewer began, to begin. And then of course, once connections begin, we begin to reduce the septic and nitrogen load to Great Pond. At the end of 2032, the outfalls projected to be available and reg, regular discharge to sand beds one through 15 at the main plant would cease. And again, implementation of additional phases of sewer-ing. So that's it.
Questions or comments from the board?
Great presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You clarified several things. I would only ask that you send, or maybe the town manager has the updated PowerPoint?
Yes, we'll definitely distribute that.
Would you send that to the board?
Absolutely.
Ms. Goldstone?
One question and, and one request for some of those future meetings that you were referencing. In terms of the outfall pipe, when will we know if that will be a reality?
Steve and I talk about this a lot. So we just completed the, the marine borings for this, for the outfall and they were, they provided very positive results. There were no cobbles, no rocks encountered. So that is great news for the outfall project. It means, I mean, there's a lot more detailed analysis to go on of that data, but there were no showstoppers in that data. So we do expect the outfall to be design-wise and construction-wise feasible. There are another number of permits we need to get and we'll be pursuing over those over the next year or two. I expect we're going to have a much better idea in the next, in the next year of how this is going.
Great. Thank you very much.
Well, I would say my one request for when we come back to some of these questions in future meetings around the, the betterments and the, the financing equity was a big part of the conversation that we had when we agreed to the, the 70-30 moving forward. And we do have a number of environmental justice tracts within town largely based on income, and so I think it would be really helpful to be able to see for the specific sewer areas median income and median home value as we're talking about how we, how we pay for these and what the responsibilities of those homeowners are.
Okay, good point.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to discuss and consider a vote to approve the revised utility standards as recommended by the Department of Public Works. Yes, sir. What would you like?
I have a question for Amy.
Quickly, this was simply a presentation to the board. So if you have a question, I'll take one question quickly. Come up to the podium.
Malcolm Donald, I'm just wondering, how, what's the homeowner's portion and what's the town's portion? Does the homeowner have to pay to hook up to the sewer? They're not, they don't have to pay for the grinder pump, is that right? And then do they, do they have to pay to hook up and then they have to pay for betterments on top of that? Or how does that all work?
She'll come up and answer your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm. It's a good question. So yes, the property owners that are connecting to the sewer will pay a betterment and that betterment will be assessed over, over 30 years at 0% interest. So I did, I'm not sure that I mentioned that earlier in my presentation, I certainly intended to, that the, the betterment is spread over 30 years at 0% interest. So it's the same amount that you pay each year in, in 30 years from now that you pay on the first day, which is a great deal, by the way. But the property owners connecting would pay a betterment and they would pay the cost to connect to the sewer. So properties who are, who have a grinder pump would, would receive that grinder pump free of charge from the town, but they do have to pay a contractor to install it. The one other cost factor that I always want to mention when I talk about the cost to property owners is that once property owners connect to sewer, they begin to be billed for sewer on their water and sewer bill. So their, their water and sewer bill will more than double depending on what the, what the rates are at that time. So that's a factor to take into account as well.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a follow-up question?
No, I, I'm not, I can't take any more questions. No, I, I'm not, I can't take any more questions, Mr.
Now we'd like to know how much this is going to cost.
Right, and we can, we can talk more about that on town meeting floor. This was, this was a presentation to the board, and we need to move on. Discussing, consider a vote to approve the revised utility standards as recommended by the Department of Public Works.
Good evening. Steve Cattarett, Deputy DPW Director. The existing utility standards that we have were originally approved in 1995, then they were revised again in 1999. So what they have is just general requirements for water and sewer, general requirements for construction and design, but there are details in these existing standards. There are nine water details that are mock draft. There are two sewer details that are mock draft, and then engineering details. So what we wanted to do was to update the details. So I made it clear to people who come into town to put in a water service or a sewer service, or to do some kind of engineering permitting. So what we did was, our goal was to make a new, a new set of standards that were a little bit more detailed, that were a little bit clearer, that the information in the water and sewer sections was clearer, so people knew what had to be installed. And also, when the permitting, engineering permitting, a little bit clearer details, so they understood exactly what they needed to install in order to comply with their applications. We looked at other municipality standards. We also looked at our existing standards. We looked at the, the plan sets for the ongoing, the new, the water projects, the water main replacement projects, and then for the sewer projects like what Amy was just describing. And then what we did was, we came up with these updated standards. Broke into three sections, water, wastewater, and engineering. We tried to describe the application process so people understand what's required when you apply for a water service or a sewer connection. We tried to make the plan requirements consistent. Right now, they're really, we're very vague plan requirements. So what we did was, we made those more detailed, and we made them the same for water and sewer. So if you applied for a water service, or you applied for a sewer connection, you'd have the same plan requirements to submit the plans with the applications. We drafted more details than what we have in the existing documents. We have 15 water details, we have 15 sewer details, and we have 12 details from engineering. So there's more detailed information available. So if you were an engineer, or someone who's looking to put in a water service or sewer service, you would have these details, and you know exactly what you need to put in. If you're a contractor, you know what you're going to be required to put in. So this should make it clear for people that want to do work in the town. The water and sewer details, like I said before, basically come from the projects that we have ongoing, the water main replacement projects and the, and the new sewer projects. The engineering details, we worked with engineering, they came up with the permits that they have, and then the kind of details that they think should go with the permits, and they developed those permits, those details that are included in here. And I'd like to thank Matt Landon, the Water Superintendent, Amy Lowell, the Sewer Superintendent, Jim McLaughlin, the Town Engineer, Scott Schluter in Engineering, Peter McConity, and our consultants, GHD on the sewer side, and Tater and Howard on the water side, because what we did was, we took their details and modified them, and they were nice enough to let us use the CAD, the existing CAD drawings that they had, and provided those to engineering, and engineering was able to modify those to meet the needs, the fountain needs for these engineering standards. So what we would ask is that these, these new standards be approved so that we could update standards that are basically 30 years old.
Thank you. Questions from the board on the revised standards? I'll start with Mr. Brown.
Mr. Cattarett, I wonder if there's any way we can maybe make it a little bit simpler for the grinder pump connection. I see that it's going to require the homeowner to hire an engineer to figure out the, the planning for the pitch and the height of the grinder pump and all. It just seems like if, it just seems like it's not that complicated. I think in the Maravista, they had septic installers that were just digging, you know, small trenches and keeping the pitch right and getting to the pipe. I don't understand why we need to add that extra layer of cost.
So we only add that extra layer of the engineering work being required for multifamily dwellings, non-residential and mixed-use applications.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Yeah, the residential applications will stay the same. Appendix A and B are the procedures that we use either for gravity connections or low-pressure connections in the previous project. So we included those in, in these revised standards.
Thank you.
Ms. Goldstone?
Yeah, I, first of all, thank you to everyone involved in doing an immense amount of work. Absolutely updating standards that are more than 25 years old is, is something that should be done. I will say, as a board member, I feel ill-prepared and uncomfortable voting these changes. We have 120 pages of the new standards, and without sitting there with the old ones, no real way to know what has actually been changed or, or updated. And I, I trust it's, it's good things, but, but without a little bit more information about what we've actually updated, I guess I don't feel like I would be making an informed vote on these, these standards. Some summary of what's been changed in, to update these, these standards would, would I think help me a lot there.
Okay.
Yeah, we can simply provide a written summary of exactly what was changed. I mean, I think probably a written summary would be better, but I could describe those changes, but we could probably be here for like 45 minutes if I went through them. So I think if we had a written list and compared the two, that would probably help you out.
I think that would help a lot, and, and again, I'm not looking for necessarily a line-by-line, but what are the nature of the updates were made, I think would be really helpful.
Well, as a construction person, I really appreciate having this completed because it's very well-done and very important, certainly going to be very helpful for the installers.
I would agree with you, Mr. Brown, and I, I think that I trust the process of the people who put this together. And I may not have picked up all the places that you made the changes, but I'm certainly comfortable with the revisions.
Madam Chair, with that being said, I'd move the approval of the revised utility standards recommended by the Department of Public Works.
Do I have a second?
I would second it. I was, I thought you might defer to Ms. Goldstone's request, but.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, and I have a second.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussing, consider a vote to approve the adoption of the 20-mile Purraro safety zones as recommended by the Traffic Advisory Committee. Mr. McConity?
Peter McConity, Director of Public Works. Safety zones have become more of a discussion in Massachusetts in the 2020, 2022-year timeframe. We were talking about them in Falmouth since 2023. We have a, we have, we do, in Falmouth, we do have one safety zone down in Quissette at the Quissette Harbor. It's, basically goes from the intersection of Quissette Road and leads down to the end over by, over by the Nobbs. So we do have one in town. Over the past couple of years, we've been working with the Traffic Advisory, and we had multiple meetings in-house with different committees and, and different town officials to talk about speed limits in town and, and the possibilities to be able to protect, to protect areas in town with, where areas are most vulnerable for either pedestrians or bicyclists, or people that are on the roadway, seniors and what have you. So the state of Massachusetts has actually gave an opportunity for cities and towns to create a safety zone without approval from Mass DOT. That's something that's brand-new. In the past, you always, when you wanted to change a speed limit on a roadway, you always had to go through Mass DOT, and most times, it was the 85th percentile speed limit of the roadway. Most times, it, the speed got higher on that road. So safety zones cannot be placed on state highways without Mass DOT approval. One thing I did want to say is, with tonight, my intention, of course, we can do a vote on this tonight, by all means, I would like to take a vote on it, if that is possible, but my intention is to be able to come back on April 28th, if there are any questions about some of the areas that we go over, to be able to, to do a final, a final recommendation on this, because this is going to affect 12 areas in town, 12 beaches in town. So if there are questions, I certainly can wait to, or Public Works can certainly wait till April 28th and still be able to get the signs in, in time, most likely be in the June timeframe if they came in. So safety zones are intended to be in, used in areas where vulnerable users are likely to be present. They can be beaches, they can be public attractions, they can be parks. The street that, and the street that a safety zone is being requested should be adjacent to the land use that's likely to attract the vulnerable users. The safety zone should contain one or more areas that have the potential conflicts of motor vehicles and vulnerable road users, bicyclists, pedestrians, for reduction in speed, such as crosswalks, driveways, or side streets. And the minimum length of a safety zone should be at least a quarter mile. That's not a, that's not a exact given, but they should be at least a quarter of a mile. So the areas that we're talking about, there are 12 areas, so I'll just go through this roughly because I do have graphs, but the first two areas are Minot Beach, basically going from Central Ave over to Moon Penny Lane, just a little bit west of Minot West Beach. Bristol Beach, Bristol Beach and Falmouth Heights is basically going to go from the Great Pond Bridge all the way over to, just across from the, the restaurant, the large restaurant, Walden Ave, the casino. Surf Drive Beach is going to be from Shore Street to Mill Road, and then Nobbska Light will basically be from the corner of the Nobbska Light property to the bottom of the Hill of Church Street with the other beaches. Chappaquoy Beach from the bike path down to the beach parking lot, that's over a half a mile, that's probably going on two-thirds of a mile. Old Dock Road from the bike path parking lot to a point south of the wharf landing, basically where the water stops, adjacent to Number 67. One thing I will say about Old Dock Road is we're also planning on building a sidewalk there this spring, that's going to be constructed. So you'll have, you'll have an impeded sidewalk path, that, a non-impeded sidewalk path from the bike path parking lot down to the, to the wharf, and also, we're going to be putting granite curbing and a sidewalk to get you over to the wharf, so the landing and then the wharf. That's something we've been working on for about a year now. Old Silver Beach, we're looking for both sides of Old Silver Beach, from Sea Road to the bridge, it's about 1,000 feet, and then Old Silver Beach from the bridge to Sham Road, which is approximately 1,100 feet. McGansett, McGansett Beach from Circle Drive to the end, that's approximately 410 feet, and then New Silver Beach Drive from Ocean View Ave down to, down to West Street to Moses Road. That's a shorter length of section of roadway, but there is a lot of beachgoers and people on the roadway. So I'm just going to quickly go through some of these, some of the areas, or all the areas. So the first area is in East Falmouth from Central Ave to Born's Pond, there's Central Ave, there's the Born Pond Bridge. Second one is from the Born's Pond Bridge over to Moon Penny, which is this section here. The safety zone three is from the Minot Great Pond Bridge over to Elysian Ave, which is to the end. Four is from Elysian Ave over to Walden Street across from the casino restaurant. Five is Surf Drive from Shore Street over to Mill Road. Six is Nobbska Light, which will be at the edge, the furthest easternmost edge of the property, around the corner, down the hill, and along Church Street to the bottom of, the bottom of the hill going up where this, where this beach is. Anyone drives this in the summertime, vehicles park on both sides of the roadway. Seven is Chappaquoy Road from the bike path all the way down, past the beach, all the way down to the, past the bridge, all the way down to the beach parking lot. Old Dock Road, this will be from the bike path parking lot down to the wharf. And again, this was, this sidewalk was supposed to be built in 2009, didn't make it, 2015 didn't make it, and so this time, we're looking to do the sidewalk along with this safety zone and Old Dock Road. Old Silver Beach from Sea Road to the bridge, Sea Road here to the bridge, and then from the bridge to Sham Road. And then 11 is McGansett Beach from Circle Drive to the end. This is a very, this is a highly heeler in the roadway down this area, there's no sidewalk. And then New Silver Beach, again, no sidewalk from where the tennis courts are in here, from West Street down to Moses Road and continues down to, this portion of property is town property down here, and a lot of people, they walk down and they get onto the town portion. And that's questions. I will say, with the 20-mile-an-hour zone, one, one of the reasons is because of the areas that it's affecting the town, it's basically hitting every area of town, east, Woods Hole, west, and north. 20-mile-an-hour speed limit is not just during the summer months, it's 24/7/365 a year. So this is going to be in effect in December, just as much as it's affecting July. So that's, people driving in these areas, it isn't, it's an actual regulatory speed limit sign at 20 miles an hour, and it will be enforced by the police department.
Questions from the board? Ms. Goldstone?
Question on that last point. What would be the extra load in terms of enforcement? This is a lot of areas with a reduced speed limit. Is that something that we can feasibly expect to enforce?
So I, I did get a phone call from the police chief today, and he said that he is in favor of these, these speed zones. I know that police chief, Laurie, he can speak to this himself, but I did, do know that in the past, he's been creating a traffic team for doing enforcement, for speed enforcement.
Madam Chair, thank you, Peter. In, in further response to Select Board Member Goldstone's question, Chief Laurie was part of the meetings that we had back in February of last year. It was my initial kind of engagement with the representatives of the Bike and Pedestrian Committee and several other residents. We looked at, is it Chapter 90, implementing the Chapter 90 reduction or posting it in thickly settled areas? That was the initial discussion. Part of Chief Laurie's input was, let's take a look at establishing these safety zones and seeing what impact that might have. So like Peter said, I'm confident in having discussions with Jeff that we'll have the resources to enforce. I know there's been a lot of comments about why not just enforce what we have. You know, up until maybe six months ago, that was kind of, that was problematic because we weren't, we didn't have the staffing. But I think going forward, because of Chief Laurie's efforts, we have the staffing now, so we'll be, we'll be in a better position to enforce not only what we have, but also enhancements to what we have with regards to these speed zones or safety zones.
Yeah, I saw those, I saw those comments, that, you know, we should enforce what we have, and we don't need to go 20 miles an hour, but at the same time, you know, there's really no need to rush. If you're in a hurry, don't take the beach route. So, I mean, I think these are good suggestions.
Go ahead, Ms. Goldstone.
Is the plan that for each of these areas, there would be the same kind of signage that we see in, in school safety areas, so those digital signs that actually clock what speed you're going and?
No, they would not be driver feedback signs, and they would not have the flashing yellow on, on both sides. Typical, the high school is a, it's a speed zone for, for the high school. That has the feedback sign, and it also has the flashing signs. These would just be the straight, just like, just like this on, it would say begin, begins zone on, on the top of this, and then at the other side would say end zone. And you usually put these about every half-mile, three-quarters of a mile to make sure they have them. So there's going to be at least, at least 24 signposts, additional signposts.
Does that mean that there would be a, with the way you just described the Minot ones, there would be a begin, end, begin, end, like on either end of the bridge, or?
No.
Where we have those, where we have those areas butting up to each other?
Yeah, that's, I just did that just for more clarity for us, for the, for the different beaches, for Minot West and Minot East and Bristol, and for Falmouth Heights. It would be one continuous zone.
Okay.
Just speed on the bridge.
I was going to say, people are going to get a little confused. Stop, start, stop, start.
Madam Chair, I'd move the approval and adoption of a 20-mile-an-hour safety zone as recommended by the Traffic Advisory Committee.
I would second that.
May we have public comment? For a second?
I will take a public comment. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, Board, Town Manager, Dave Bosnowski, President of the Falmouth Heights Maravista Neighborhood Association. This is always difficult for me, speaking on behalf of a group of about 500 people. We haven't polled everybody. I've discussed it at the board level. Safety is on all our minds. One of our board members was literally walking with the gentleman. One of our board members was literally walking with the gentleman two and a half years ago now, where the car from behind jumped the curb, drove up on the sidewalk, and killed the man she was walking with. So, we're very sensitive to the issue of safety. The, the, the area in front of shipwrecked, the ballpark, Falmouth Heights Beach, in the summertime, it's very populous, as opposed to some of the other more remote beaches. They don't have restaurants there, and people crossing the streets and whatnot, there's parking lot. So, it's, it's a very sensitive area. Right now, between the area of Walden at the top of the ballpark, Central Park, the ballpark there, Central Park on, on Grant, to Great Pond Bridge, where the, that Bristol Beach.
Mr. Bosonowski, please speak to the board.
Yes, of course.
Please speak to the board.
Where the area of Falmouth Heights and Bristol Beach is gonna go from Walden at the ballpark, all the way to Elysia, Elysia, ah, sorry, all the way to Great Pond Bridge. As of right now, there are zero speed signs in that entire area of, of the stretch of Grand. There is one, one yellow faded sign at the corner of where Minot meets Grand, because that is a very dangerous intersection right there. There is one small yellow sign, it's not one of your typical white traffic signs, there are zero traffic signs there now. The first sign you see from, coming from the west, is at the top of the heights, at, in the vicinity of Melrose Street there, I don't know if you're familiar with it. And then the next sign you see going eastbound is all the way near Ocean, Ocean Ave. It's over, certainly over a mile, before you see any speed signs going from west to east. So, right now, my attitude is, the signs that are there are registering a 25 mile an hour speed zone. And with no signs and zero enforcement, it, it really doesn't matter what speed you put, whether it's 20 or 25. Someone who's going to, by definition, be speeding and jump the curb and kill someone is not gonna observe whatever sign you put there. So, it's really a matter of enforcing what we've got, and I think we've done a pretty poor job of that. Signage is incredibly important down there, especially if you're going to have those kind of, that kind of population in the summertime. And then year-round, I, I'm not so sure that the difference between 25 and 20 miles an hour in that section is really going to make any difference. So, i, if we were to enforce what we had, enforce what we have, put proper signage up, I, I think that particular area there would be resolved of any real major issues. The, the corner of, of Minot where it meets Grand, it's, it's, it's a blind curve as you're coming around from east to west, and you're, you've got three streets intersecting there, and a crosswalk, all within about 125 feet as you come around a blind corner. I think that corner should be addressed for people coming around that corner even at 25 miles an hour, and then having to slam on the brakes for someone in a crosswalk as they come around that corner. I, I'd encourage maybe even putting a stop sign in, coming from, from east to west there. Just my comments that, on the subject, but I do think it's, it's important.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second on the board. Go ahead.
May I?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Catherine Jansen, Chair of Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, just wanna share some data. So, at 20 miles an hour, a pedestrian has an 18% chance of death or serious injury being hit by a car. At 30 miles an hour, it's 50%. At 40 miles an hour, it's 77%, and this is right off the MassDOT website. If we look at the time it takes to drive at 30 miles an hour versus 20, and we take this popular route, which I take all the time, I'd rather drive by the ocean and look at the views and be on 28, because I live in East Falmouth, if you're going from Heights to Bristol and both Minots to Central, that is 1.44 miles. At 30 miles an hour, the time to drive it is 2.88 minutes, at 20 miles an hour, 4.32, that's just under a 90-second difference. So, I guess I would ask, when we're thinking about this resolution, and I know you made a motion to approve, thank you, sir, that we consider the fact that it, the speed limit is important, because even if people are driving higher, the lower the speed limit, the more likely they are to observe it, and I also have faith in Chief Lori. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. Okay, Mr. McConerty, you're up again. Discuss and consider the acceptance of a grant from the Falmouth Road Race for the purchase of an electronic message board sign for the Department of Public Works.
Yes, so, so, people driving down Gifford Street, if you don't know where the Public Works building, we do not have a sign in front of Public Works that says that we are Public Works. The sign that we do have is in, is on the site, it's in the site, it's deteriorating, its damage is deteriorating, and it needs replacement. So, in 2025, Public Works is going to be building a new sign to be put onto the roadway section between Public Works Building and Lawrence Lynch, and this sign is going to be six foot wide, and it's probably gonna be about 10 feet tall, to have our sign with the, with the address. And while we're working on doing this, we're looking at putting in a, a, the electronic speed board message. Anyone that drives by Falmouth, that Public Works in the wintertime, we have our signboards out, the portable signboards out, looking for plow drivers, it's not, it's not too attractive. We do take a lot of pride in our building, and it's not too attractive driving by and seeing the ground. So, what we're looking to do is, the sign that we built in-house, we have in, internal people that can build, that build the sign, we're looking to face it with the split rock, put a nice flagstone cover over the bottom of it with some nice aluminum posts, and be able to light the, light the address and the Public Works sign. And the center of it, we're looking at putting a, the electronic message board, and that's where we had conversations with the Falmouth Road Race, and we requested a grant from the Falmouth Road Race, and they approved a $25,000 for us to, to have that incorporated into the sign.
Questions, comments from Mr. McConerty? Mr. Brown?
Are you gonna need a variance for this?
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll be coming back, we have to go through the whole process with the signs, but like I say, right now, our building, if you don't, if you didn't know where Public Works was, you, there's, there's no way to, we don't have a sign, it's in, on the site, it's inside the site, so, very hard to see. So, we will be getting back, but it'll be designed in-house, and it'll be built in-house.
It actually looks more like an annex of Lawrence Lynch, if you go by, because you split, that road splits the two, and it looks like ancillary outpost for them.
When, when we're doing winter operations in nighttime, you don't know how many times myself and other Public Works members to go into Public Works, we always swing into the Lawrence Lynch lot, because we always overshoot our parking lot.
You can see that, you definitely see that.
If I might, and that's where all your contractors and the new ones, they load for salt there too, don't they, in the winter?
Yes.
So, so all the new, it would help them as well.
Correct, yeah, correct. Yeah, it'll be used for, it'll be used for public safety messages, winter operations, everything that we do at Public Works, so.
And, the final comment is, if you think you could get by with it any smaller and ask for less of a variance, it might be helpful to us when we're considering other people requesting the variances, because we're kinda stingy with them for business, so.
Okay, something, that's something we can, can look into.
My question's a silly one, but will we get to see any of DPW's sense of humor in those messages on the message board?
It's, it's a public operation, so, yes. We like to say we have a sense of humor, it all depends.
We might have to limit what gets put up there.
Just avoid typos, no typos, no typos.
But it can be used, I mean, for the, they do, we do the holiday display, we do the shutting down roadway, we do the Christmas parade, we, just for the holidays alone, the Fourth of July, the fireworks, all that type of stuff that, you know, it will be a Public Works sign, but it'll be able to use, be used by all the, the town departments also.
Vote Tuesday maybe, like the fire department does.
Vote Tuesday, exactly.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move acceptance of a grant from Falmouth Road Race for the purchase of an electronic message signboard for the Department of Public Works.
Second, Ms. Goldstone's motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, unanimous, thank you.
Thanks to the Road Race, too.
Yes, thank you to the Road Race.
Yes, thank you, absolutely, thank you for the Road Race.
Okay, we're gonna discuss and consider a vote to approve the Planning Department's One Stop for Growth Expression of Interest Submittal. Mr. Cornoch, our Town Planner?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Jed Cornoch, Town Planner. Included in your packet and for this agenda item is a request for your approval for the Planning Department to submit two expressions of interest to the One Stop for Growth Grant Program, the, for two projects. The first is the Route 151 Water Main Extension Project. You may remember this from last year. We applied for this grant around this time last year, we were denied, we were, we didn't receive funding. However, in a meeting with the state officials, they indicated and encouraged us to reapply this year. Things looked better for this year, so we're crossing our fingers and we'll have the same application going in. And the second project that we're asking for approval for is the update of our local comprehensive plan. So, the Route 151 application, as you can see in your packet, we estimate that cost to be about $4.8 million, and then we're asking for $150,000 to update our local comprehensive plan, which would include hiring a consultant to basically facilitate the entire project. We would oversee that work, but it would involve a host of public meetings, and it would be, as I mentioned in our write-up, it's a good time to be doing that, because, as you know, anytime you update a local comprehensive plan, it has to align with the goals of the regional policy plan at the Cape Cod Commission. They're going through an update process right now, so it's perfect time for us to align with those goals with a new set of, with a new RPP that they have in place. So, importantly, this request is not only to submit an expression of interest, but to ask your approval for us to, when ready, to submit the actual grant application that will be sometime in June, early June.
Thank you. Questions?
I have no question, I just comment, thank you for taking the initiative to help out with this grant for the Water Main, appreciate it.
I'll say, I definitely hope the Water Main gets funded, I'm also particularly excited about the comprehensive plan update, and agree the timing is terrific, and we're certainly a town that has, is seeing a lot of growth and change, and it's, it's, it's time to update that plan, so that's terrific to see. I will move to approve the request to submit two expressions of interest for the One Stop for Growth Grant Program as presented, and to approve the request to submit full applications for each project by the program deadline.
I would second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, discuss and consider a vote to approve the reorganization of the, okay, I'm gonna get through this, geographic information systems under the Planning Division, Mr. Renshaw.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Article 5, Section 7 of our Charter calls for, or outlines, the process by which reorganizations of departments and divisions can occur. As stated in your packet, with the approval of the Select Board, the Town Manager can establish, reorganize, consolidate, or abolish any division, department, or position placed by the Charter or vote of the Select Board under the manager's discretion and supervision. Madam Chair, Select Board, in the past, the GIS specialist position has been part of the Information Technology, IT Department, and is reported to the IT Director. Other places I've managed, I, it, it's kind of a best practice that the GIS specialist or technician position functions, I think, more effectively and efficiently within the planning, community development function. The information and the services provided by GIS run the gamut, they service the Police Departments, Recreation, it serves multiple departments, but I've seen in the past, and I think it would be the case here in Falmouth, that we would be better served if the GIS specialist position was housed up under the planning function. So, with that, I'm recommending, or requesting, I should say, your approval to transition, move this GIS specialist position, which we currently have filled, from the IT Department to the Planning Department, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments?
I would accept that recommendation, I think it seems like a logical thing, as long as Jed still has time to write all those grants.
Yeah, I'm watching his face, just in case. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to affirm the recommendation to reorganize GIS under the Planning Division.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, unanimous, thank you, Mr. Renshaw, and thank you to our Town Planner. Okay, we're gonna...
Want me to read this, Madam Chair?
Oh, sir, I would love it if you did.
Select Board is being requested to consider the request from Cape Cod Kuangping Tai Chi Kuan Club, and I apologize if I've mispronounced, for a waiver of the special event permit fee for the Tai Chi practice at Marina Park on Saturday mornings from April through December of 2025. Madam Chair, I believe the applicant is here, hi.
Diane Marshall, I'm the president of the club.
Okay, hang, hang on, hang on one second.
Well, that's okay, so, so I'll just, I'll just turn this over, this is a request that was made last year, if you all recall, and the only comment I'll make, Madam Chair and Select Board, again, it's a request for a, a complete waiver of the fee. The Select Board over the past four years has, has agreed to waive this fee, I think it dates back to 2022, I should say, for 2022, 2023, and 2024, the Select Board agreed to, to waive this fee in its entirety, and it's my recommendation that the Select Board do so in 2025, so with that...
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Diane Marshall of the Cape Cod Kuangping Tai Chi Kuan Club. We actually are celebrating our 30th anniversary this year, and we are a nonprofit, and we do love to use the Bigelow Marine Park one day a week for outdoor practice when the weather is nice, primarily in the summer.
Any questions from the board? You've been up in front of us before.
I would move approval of waiving the fee. Motion to approve the request from Cape Cod Kuangping Tai Chi Kuan Club for a waiver of the special event permit fee for the Tai Chi practice at Marina Park on Saturday mornings from April through December 2025.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck. Number nine, consider the request from the Arts Falmouth, Inc., for a waiver of a special event permit fee for the Arts Alive Festival on the Library Lawn, Pagnunin Park, and Shore Street Extension on Friday, 6/13, Saturday, 6/14, Sunday, 6/15. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair, the applicant is here, so I'll be brief. The event celebrates and supports local artists and performers, and is free and open to all. The applicant, Arts Falmouth Incorporated, is a nonprofit organization. Over the course of the past eight years, the Select Board has voted to waive the entire special permit fee for this event, with the exception of 2021, when it approved a reduced fee of $150. It's my recommendation that the Board consider approval of the applicant's request.
Questions of the applicant from the board?
I have no questions.
No, it's a fabulous event for everyone. I would move approval of the request from Arts Falmouth, Inc., for a waiver of the special event permit fee for the Arts Alive Festival on the Library Lawn, Pagnunin Park, and Shore Street Extension on Friday, June 13, Saturday, June 14, and Sunday, June 15, 2025, as presented.
I would, go ahead, Mike. All right, I would second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you for doing it again.
Thank you.
Very welcome, thank you. Okay, consider a request from the Locust Street sign for a variance to sign code 184-37, measurement of sign area for the Falmouth Bridge Marina, 250 Scranton Ave in Falmouth. Mr. Renshaw?
Thanks, Madam Chair, the applicant's Locust Street sign is here tonight, so again, I'll keep my comments brief. I discussed this with the Building Department, the Building Department's advising that the applicant is applying for a variance in sign area, as defined in Section 184-37. Madam Chair, Select Board, the length of the existing wall, which is shown in some of the photos submitted by the applicant, is 34 feet, and Locust Street signs has a permitted sign, an existing sign, which reads Flying Bridge Marina, which measures 33.9 square feet. The variance requests for an additional 18 square feet of sign area, so that the business may install four logos reading HCB, Chris Craft, Yellowfin, and SH, again, as shown in the illustration, and I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Select Board, I have some pictures, I don't know what you have here.
If you give them out to me, I'll pass them out, thank you. Thank you.
The calculations were a little off on those...
Name, please.
Yes, your name.
Those calculations were a little off.
Name, please.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Mike from the Locust Street Sign Company. I'm here representing the Flying Bridge Marina. Those calculations were a little off. What we have here, what we're here for is to seek a variance with the additional signage. And if you look at the front page, that, that photo is what I took today, and the second page is what I'm proposing. What we're actually proposing works out to be about 16 extra square feet, you know, four by four. The Flying Bridge Marina has been approved, permitted, and installed, and paid for. What we'd like to do is add the, as the bottom picture depicts, a picture of the brand names that the boatyards are going to be carrying this year. The reason for seeking a variance is twofold. The first is that the Marina needs to identify itself as a separate entity from the boatyard to the south. Does everybody know where the project is, first of all? It's in between the Flying Bridge Restaurant and the Marina to the south, the Falmouth Marina, the Falmouth Marine. So we'd like to add a few signs for a couple reasons. First, as I said, to identify itself as a separate entity, and the second is to show what the products that they sell. The reason it's important is that the facility isn't very large and can't accommodate launching and hauling and a paint shop and what have you, so they're going to count on the boat sales to carry the boatyard, and that's why it's important. In conclusion, this would allow the issuing of the variance, keep the working waterfront working, and the independent boatyards independent, so...
Questions from the board?
I have no questions.
No question. I would just comment that I think while the numbers, I know it seems the proposed by number is bigger, the visual impact in my mind is actually smaller with the four smaller logos there than the two big ones, so...
I don't see any harm. They're all smaller than the overall signage saying Flying Bridge Marina, so...
I would agree. Mr. Zlott?
I just have a simple question. Describe the fact that you're going to be changing the use. Are you changing the use to just the sales class, or are you still going to do boatwork?
Yes, it's a, it's a full-service Marina. We're going to do what we can at that location, but as I said, it's smaller, doesn't have the capabilities to launch and haul boats, doesn't have a paint shop or anything, so we're going to focus on sales, speaking for the owner. I don't exactly...
But you're going to continue to do some boatwork?
Oh, yeah, yeah, as much as we can do on-site.
I just want to get that on the record.
So just to make sure that the use of the buildings aren't, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
I would move approval. I don't see a problem with it.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Consider approval of the seasonal and spring license renewals. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all know, the Select Board Office, Phyllis Downey, does a fantastic job processing these applications each and every year. The request before you tonight is to approve, as published in tonight's agenda packet, the seasonal and spring renewal license renewals. Madam Chair, Select Board, the applications and checklist for all the required documents and payments that were due were mailed to the licensees, and the listed licensees, again, as published in tonight's agenda packet, submitted all the required items on the checklist and are ready to be approved for renewal for 2025, with the exception, and this is important, of the seasonal common victualler and seasonal restaurant licenses, which, and those are indicated in your packet, are pending building and health inspections, and are, these inspections are typically completed within a week or so of opening. Once these inspections are completed and entered into our permitting system, Permitise, the front office is advised of that fact, and then if the Select Board approves these pending the health and building department inspections, then the license would be issued. So Madam Chair, and again, to, I don't want to call those out, but they're indicated in your agenda packet, is the seasonal all alcohol restaurant and club common victualler, and the entertainments, and Sunday entertainment categories, as published in tonight's agenda packet. It's my recommendation, Madam Chair, that the Board approve the seasonal and spring license renewals for 2025 as published in tonight's agenda packet.
Questions or comments from the board?
No.
I'll move that. I'll move the approval of seasonal and spring license renewals for 2025 as published.
As presented, yeah, okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, we're going to move into the consent agenda. I'll go through each item. If any board member chooses to hold an item, please notify me as the chair.
Would you like me to read those?
I was just going to ask. There's not enough air in this room for me, so either, yes, please, thank you.
Number one, licenses, consider a vote to approve application of special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Horizon Shine Productions, Coast Fest, Lynn Whitehead Band Shell, Marine Park, 180 Scranton Ave., Saturday, August 2nd, 2025, from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. Item B, on licenses, consider a vote to approve an application for the pledge of collateral of its annual alcohol beverages license for Cravings Pizza and Ice Cream LLC, doing business as Simply Divine Pizza Co., 261 Main Street, Unit A. Item C, on licenses, consider a vote to approve an application for a common victualler license, 319 Incorporated, doing business as Country Fair Restaurant, 319 Main Street, Unit A. And number two, under administrative orders, consider a vote to approve petition from N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy and Verizon New England Incorporated, for permission to erect and maintain poles and their respective wires and cables and fixtures to be placed thereon in a public way of Gifford Street, Falmouth, and to install one new J.O. pole to be labeled 1054/2.5, approximately 120 feet north of the existing pole, 105/2. This pole location is necessary for our electric service to 800 Gifford Street. Item B, under administrative orders, consider a vote to approve petition from N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy and Verizon New England Incorporated, for permission to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures along and across the following public way, Church Street, Falmouth, and to install one new J.O. pole to be labeled 97/10-5, approximately 53 feet southeast of existing pole 97/10. This work is necessary to provide electric service to Lot 6, Larches Way. Item C, consider the request from Friends of Falmouth Bike Ways to initiate the naming process to honor Patty and Leonard Johnson with the placement of a plaque on the Shining Sea Bike Path. Item D, consider a vote to accept a donation in the amount of $1,500 from the Falmouth Water Stewards to the Department of Public Works donation account for supplies to build an additional food scrap drop-off box. I want to be on the record as recusing myself from that vote, because I'm a member of that board of the Falmouth Water Stewards. Item C, I don't know if we need to hold that?
I think we're going to hold, we're going to hold administrative order D.
Okay.
Yeah, D.
And then item E, consider a vote to approve a request from the Recreation Department to use the remaining Falmouth Road Race donation funds for the purchase of protective covering for the Gus Candy Gymnasium floor. Item F, request variance to the sign code 184-7 placement and 184-32 off-premise signs, Falmouth Commodores Flags on Main Street light poles and Gov. Fuller Field light poles, June 2nd through August 15th, 2025. Item G, request variance to the sign code 184-32 off-premise signs for Falmouth Commodores Baseball Clinics, late April through August 15th, 2025. Item H, request for variance to sign code 184-32 off-premise signs, Falmouth Commodores Game Day signs, June 6th through August 1st, 2025. Item I...
You're not done.
Item I, consider a vote to approve certification of application form to authorize submittal to a Department of Energy Green Communities Competitive Grant for various energy efficiency projects in town and school buildings. Item J, consider a vote to approve the rooftop solar notice of lease, NOI, and lease agreement with Select Energy Development LLC for the Water Department plan.
Madam Chair, I'd move the consent agenda with the exception of item D, due to Mr. Brown's recusal.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go back to administrative orders, D.
Madam Chair, I'd move item D separately, given Mr. Brown's recusal.
Okay, all those, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not opposed, but all abstain.
Abstention. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move into review and vote approval of the minutes, public session March 28, 2022, March 1, 2025, March 10, 2025. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes, I remember it well.
Okay.
2022.
I know. That was, I was reading that, and I'm like, wow!
It's an outlier. I didn't find anything substantially incorrect.
Ms. Goldstone, did you take a look?
I, I did, and Madam Chair, I would move approval of the minutes from those sessions with amendment of a number of misspelled names that I will provide to Town Manager's office.
Perfect, so we have a motion to approve with Ms. Goldstone's amendments based on names.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? And thank you for those edits. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Town Manager supplemental report, Mr. Renshaw?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Three quick updates. This Friday morning, I have an appointment to meet with DPW and an engineering consultant over at the West Falmouth Fire Rescue Station, Station 4, for the purpose of walking the site. As you recall, November 2024, town meeting, there's some funds appropriated for an engineering, structural engineering study. We're going to be walking the site with the engineering consultants to look at the feasibility of adding an annex or a bay to Station 4 in the future. So anyway, I wanted to give the Select Board an update on that, so that's this Friday. Also coming soon is a soft launch of our new automated agenda management system through Civic Plus. My office, Diane Davidson and Phyllis Downey in particular, have done a great job working with the software vendor Civic Plus, building the system. It's been tested by all the departments, and everybody, I think I can speak for everybody, is enjoying it. It's going to be a huge improvement over what we're currently using, which is a lot of emails and attachments going back and forth to compile, you know, 500-page Select Board Agenda. This automates that process and puts it all up in the cloud in one platform, so to speak, eliminates all of the emails and attachments and things getting misplaced and just chaos that you can imagine. So the soft launch for that, it's always good in my, I've done a few of these launches, it's always good to transition using both the new system and the old. So we're going to use what I think is kind of a, typically a light agenda, the April 7th meeting before town meeting agenda to kind of test the new system. So that's, that's going to be the soft launch. The permanent launch and implementation, we're targeting April 28th, the last meeting in April, for the, for the hard launch. So we're all excited about that. And lastly, I recently executed an agreement with Cross Spectrum Acoustics to examine three potential sites for a future pickleball complex. As you all recall, we went through this exercise once before at Trotting Park, and there were some concerns with regards to noise, so we're asking Cross Spectrum Acoustics, a new acoustical engineer, to take a look at not only Trotting Park, but two additional sites. So we're excited to get that project, that analysis and evaluation underway as quickly as possible. And as you all recall, I established a pickleball working group, and that group has been very interested in, in doing this next study to perhaps identify a parcel that would be appropriate for a 12 to 16-court pickleball facility. And that's all the updates I have.
Thank you. Select Board reports.
Anything?
I do need to share that unfortunately, I will miss the April 7th meeting and that night of town meeting due to work travel, the dates of which shifted after we voted that schedule, so...
Okay, thanks for letting us know. Mr. Brown?
Just, I'll report on the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association meeting. We had an update from one of the, I forgot the lady, I should have written, oh, Mrs. Pyowansky, and she is the Director of Mega Projects, and she gave us an update on the status of the Bourne Bridge and Sagamore Bridge replacement. Of course, the Bourne is not funded, but Sagamore funding so far is still in place, and it seems like it's still moving forward. And she informed us about the takings that are going to be required around the bridge structure for rerouting roads and so forth. You know, there's some, a few people that are disappointed that their properties are being taken, but at least they'll get fair market value. And then in the coming month, on April 11th, we're going to meet at the Sheridan Eastham, and we've invited our legislation, legislative delegation to come and hopefully update us on their efforts to avoid the changes to the SRF funding, the cap on the $50 million, and the yearly reporting requirements that have been proposed. So as far as I can tell, everyone is in opposition to that, and we're hoping that our legislators are working on it. We'd like to hear from them on the 11th to tell us if they're being successful with their persuasive arguments. That's all I have.
I attended by Zoom my CCMPO monthly meeting today, and given the fact that I'm not seeking reelection to this seat, they told me that I could designate my position on the CCMPO to a fellow board member if they so desire, or someone within our group in town here, because Falmouth holds the seat till 2026. We'll wait for Mr. Muscala to come back, and I'll make that announcement again. I just wanted to put that out there for, that kind of dovetails to what you're talking about now. We do a lot of that tip information and extreme planning money-wise all the way out to 2032.
Yeah.
So it's, it's very informative, so maybe something one of you are interested in.
Sounds good.
My only update is, I had asked for people to let me know if they were interested in putting together the Evaluation Subcommittee. I heard from no one, so...
Ah, you might have missed that.
So I am more than, I've announced it once or twice, I'm more than happy to put all the evaluation information together, again, to come up with a report. The reason I bring that up is we'll need to do that before, before May 20th.
I'm going to help you with that. I'm sorry if I missed that.
So, no, it's, it's not a problem. So I just want you to be thinking about the evaluation and thinking about any, if there are any amendments you want to make to the document or anything like that, let me know. Otherwise, I would move forward with the same document that we've used before, and I'd like to just keep it out there so that you're thinking that way.
Okay.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
town meeting coverage, and for good reason. Not only do we have a terminal and offices here, about one-third of our employees call Falmouth their home. We always work hard to serve our neighbors, friends, and the traveling public. We recently put seven new electric buses into service at our Falmouth parking lots. Soon we'll be adding new vessels to our fleet, continuing work on our energy-efficient Wood Soul Terminal buildings, and adding solar panels at our largest parking lot. At the Steamship Authority, we're serving the islands and you.